Coverage with the driveway and parking lot.
Because this is option two now, right Frank?
Yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Look, I heard a few people comment on the telephone pole.
I keep saying no and then she just keeps talking.
I didn't say no.
Are we gonna be doing something more in line of like the antique black? You know, something that's attractive for the?
Um, I don't know. I don't know that we really talked about what the pole was.
Yeah.
John said it was what, a twenty foot pole?
Yeah.
I think that's what he said, right?
Nice idea.
Yeah, so I don't know if that was a wooden power pole kinda thing or something aesthetic.
Wouldn't it be better plus they have like, I mean you go through the west side of Manchester, you see all these black cast iron, whatever those are.
Yeah, no, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I honestly, Lee and I don't know. I don't know that he specified. I don't think it says in his uh, write-up either.
I think we need to get to point, you know, ask John to put together an equipment list and see, you know, get some information, but.
Yeah, oh yeah, total list, yeah. Yeah, because right now we got pieces.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I think we could give him a copy of this. And then um, we should have him put together a more of a.
Realistic price?
Package, yeah.
Okay.
And we could also ask about what are these poles and this.
If you look at these two side by side, this is option one, only one pole.
Yeah.
Option two with two poles.
Yeah.
How much more lighting do you see in the parking lot?
Well, you get all this done in here that you don't get here. And then you get.
Wait, wait, what?
You get this all the way up here to the.
He's colorblind, he doesn't see the colors.
This doesn't change, because this pole is there, whether it's option one or option two.
Yeah, it does. Well.
This pole is there.
Yeah.
So you don't get any more lighting here.
Actually, you do, because.
There you do.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have some blockage, but I mean, this light, this pole here is gonna also give light to it. It combines.
Right, the brightness of it, I think, may be the difference too, because you'll notice that this blue line is back here.
Oh yeah, I guess my question is.
Has it been colored ones, like it's.
Yeah, I know, yeah.
From, from what I can see.
Yeah.
The, even without this pole here.
Yeah.
You still get lighting. It may not be as bright as this one.
Yeah.
But you still get lighting, I mean, you have to have.
Oh yeah, you'll have something, yeah.
You have to have daylight lighting to walk from the building to your car? Or you just need lighting so at least you can see.
You need lights so that it's safe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. I see lighting here.
In this, yeah, but this kinda cuts off right about here, where this one comes out further down.
Yeah, but the parking lot ends right here.
Yeah.
That's where the parking lot is, right here.
You like the handicap area?
I'm just saying, you don't need to spend another five, six thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
Let's pause for sure we can get a little bit of lighting.
Yeah, and maybe not, maybe, you know, I mean, that was a good question for John, because I don't know what that means in terms of intensity of lighting.
I guess what. Right, exactly, yeah, and what's the intensity, I mean.
Yeah, it'd be nice if somebody could come and say, hi, this is intensity five, this is what it looks like. Intensity two, this is what it looks like. So it might be the difference between moon time on a sunny day and six o'clock at dusk. You can still see.
Sure.
But you can't see as bright as.
But we also have to figure out also what's our requirements, safety requirements. Whenever we. But when you're inside an office building or a factory, they have different requirements for different lighting.
Yeah.
I don't know if there's any requirements for outside lighting.
I don't either, or right now we have none to speak of.
Right, no, but I mean, we may, you know, but if someone gets hurt, are we on the hook for it?
Yeah, do we create, create a liability, yeah. At the end of the. Well, I think John can make that part of his uh. His thing, I don't know if there's R S A's or whatever that cover lighting.
Yeah, well, Department of Labor would be the first place to start it, if anyone's dealing with safety, municipalities.
Oh shit.
No issue doesn't apply for us, Department of Safety, I mean, Labor, sorry.
Oh.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be a good question, Frank, it's a good thinker.
Because if there is some requirement, then, yeah, it'd be option one and it'd be.
Maybe option one still is the way to go.
Yeah.
I mean, we were happy with option one.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. Hard to say, I don't know, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah, until we try and get some numbers, I mean.
Yeah, now, go back to option one for a moment, Ted, what was John's plan for, because I don't remember, I've talked about it. What was his plan for installing lighting? What was going on the building?
Yeah.
And then a twenty foot pole over in this corner.
Yeah, option one and two are the same, the only difference is you're gonna put another pole on the other side.
Oh, the parking lot.
Other than that, the two lights are on the building.
On the building and then one on that corner, right? And this one still has the light on the corner.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, yeah, good point. Yeah, I don't know what, what more are we getting for the increased cost?
Can you get in touch with John and ask him if he can give us an idea of how much lighting? These numbers represent? I can't even see it, no, I just.
No, neither can I, too.
I might go. They had two.
Two, two and a half, three.
I was surprised at the numbers. Yeah, I don't put dots.
Two point seven, I think it's, well, four point seven here. So.
Yeah, what does that mean?
What we're trying to do is see if he can give us some idea of how much light these numbers represent. Maybe if he had a.
You have pictures or something.
Pictures, or maybe if you had like a flashlight that dims.
Yeah, that's true.
You know, we could shut the light.
Could give a demonstration, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Reasonable facts that we.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so more discussion.
Yeah.
Do you need to copy this?
No, that's a good point, I saw it, you know. Just some, some checking there. You know, some, that'd be good.
Okay.
So, we're good with that now? Moving on.
Okay.
Moving on.
Um, Steve just has a thing in here about the C I P agenda, he emailed it to me, so.
Yeah, he sent me an email.
I think that's designed for you though, did he say?
I don't know, it's just, this is to me.
Yeah, I think he printed it off so he can handle it.
Oh, okay, so, good.
Yeah, I did get an email from him with a blank form on it, um, I think it was yesterday.
I'm not sure why we have the Linda Hackers' Liturary in our box, but.
Well, her husband is involved with the town.
Yeah.
And typically with this, people that have been involved with just an F Y I, they'll let you know that if you weren't aware of it, if you were close to them, then you.
Okay. Gotcha. I know, I mean, I remember you heckling, I hadn't talked to him in years, years, you know. Sorry, here, what? Oh, David Pierce, speaking of the, your friend David, General Stark byway. Um, seems that the official request is in at the Traffic Bureau. The seventeen signs, they're in production at the Mid State Prison. Yeah, I guess there's some stuff about, on Friday, it's Chronicle, and they have a link to it, if you wanna go and look at it, and Gosstown News has got an upcoming story on it.
They were actually here this morning, taking pictures.
I saw there's an upcoming story, picture to run with the story is scheduled at the Dunbar and Stark statue Wednesday, so time thirty, time thirty, I'll log them.
They delayed it because of yesterday's rain, today.
That's nice, I couldn't hear if I wanted to, were you here for that?
No, I was here yesterday.
Yeah, but you were here, remember the guy came in with the signs? Oh, that was supposed to bring it up. He was from the Gosstown.
Yeah, well, he wasn't taking pictures, no, they weren't, he didn't say that.
I know, no, he told us they were just out there taking pictures, I said, oh, if you had come in there, but.
I used the airfare, pumpkin festival, so. Yeah, you have some.
Yeah, he wants permission to do that.
And I said, oh, if we, if you can get permission to put him on town.
Town property.
On property.
What other pumpkins?
Pumpkin festival in Gosstown.
Oh.
Two weeks.
I gotta turn to another kid, aren't we?
No, it's not for us.
No, that's for us, it's for the great pumpkin drop, I think, right?
Yeah, they have a thing like that, so like regatta, they go through the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've never attended it, but I have heard about it.
Alrighty, October eighth, we have I on healthcare reform, IRS reporting applicable large employer workshop. Nine to eleven. Ted and I have to sign up for this.
That's the one that you said you wanna go, because we were working on that worksheet, and you wanted them to explain it a little bit better. But.
Yeah, but this, this, this is for applicable large employer.
Correct, and that's what that worksheet is for, and when I got a call yesterday from representative from there, she said that she doesn't feel that we qualify.
Yeah, well, why here we won't, I thought it was for all. So, we're not, we're not a large employer, isn't it?
We said it's not gonna apply, there's gonna be like ten minutes of a whole day's class to, to talk about this formula sheet. But because we only have nine full-time employees, it's not likely, even if you add up all the full-time or part-time hours and, and do the math of that formula, that we're gonna exceed that fifty employee.
No, I didn't know that, I'm not.
Oh, okay, alright.
That's one hour, so we're good, so.
Anybody else wanna sign up or?
I'm not, I can't.
She said it's not gonna apply to us and.
Yeah, no, that was one I had to pick off on.
It was a little white door, wasn't it?
Yeah, apparently not.
I haven't seen on my calendar yet, but. I'll keep it posted.
Okay.
Maybe.
I'll forward you the, you know, reminder.
Alright, thank you. Oh, trustee of the trust fund set, um, they sent us a letter. They wanna put on, basically they wanna put a warrant article on the warrant to allow them to use, um. Capital reserve funds to pay for, um, investment advice. It's been authorized by the legislation since twenty fourteen.
Is it how much that they want?
Well, no, it's just, basically if they invest, they will seek someone else's advice to take and invest their money instead of just putting it into the low yielding.
Like the.
State, like, yeah, exactly. And then take and use the capital reserve funds, whether it's the interest or what, I'm not sure, to pay those fees for that advice.
Okay.
He did say he'd try to meet with the board to discuss it.
Yeah.
Because it's not very clear.
Because I mean, if we're gonna only gain hypothetically, you know, say we have fifty dollars in interest for everything all year long, and we're only gonna gain another fifty dollars and it's gonna cost us two hundred dollars in fees, that makes no sense.
Right, exactly.
So, I mean, I'd like to know some numbers for us before, but I agree to that.
Yep.
Oh yeah.
So, are they gonna come and talk with us?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Um, did we ever make a decision on Mr. Solars's?
No, but you asked me to pull out last year's people, and it's here. So, this is the folder we had last year, this is our bid policy.
What is, what is this for?
This is for Dunbar and Fuel.
That's right.
Submitted a proposal for fuel services for the.
Extension.
Oh, no, extend it, I did see that, yep, okay.
To extend, yeah.
Yeah, that was on the, in the last one.
Yeah.
Yep. Um, and what we had here is, um, J R had submitted a, a bid proposal last year, similar to what you have there. And at the time, we were involved with the S A U nineteen, and they had contacted us to see if we wanted to join in with the S A U. And we decided, no, we're gonna go with local business, and it was fortunate for us, right before it went bankrupt.
Yeah.
We didn't have any issues with fuel in any of our buildings whatsoever, and I guess last year he had, his bid was to, um, just a percentage of the R I C, or something like that.
Twenty cents.
It's twenty cents.
Or R I C.
Twenty cents in that, what did he say this year?
So, I, I remember from attending selectman meetings, um, in the past, that there was some issues with, um, running out of fuel and.
Oh, yeah.
Trade fall, didn't or couldn't, or whatever.
That was the school.
Was it the school?
That was the school.
So, those problems, it needs this last year, but I don't think I heard anything about it.
Library, library.
Library, I know, numerous times, and recent hire, too.
Yeah, library, I thought, right, yeah. Yeah. So, we haven't had those problems since making the chair.
Not at all, that's his last year's poll, and there is a copy of the bid policy.
That's the last year, that's the.
So, this hasn't been extended before, has it?
No.
This will be the first time.
This, this, last year was the first year of this contract.
And there's only a one-year contract with him, not a multi-year?
They only do it through the season, they typically, for fuel, they won't go longer than.
Really? Who's they, the?
Any.
The provider?
Yeah, the provider won't go further out.
Once you buy a large quantity like they do.
Yeah, right, yeah. Yeah.
You don't have anything in here about extending the contracts, do we?
Um, actually, I think there is something.
Well, the head's case is not requiring a bidding procedure, and item previously awarded within the past twelve months, so I mean, that falls into that category, so we don't have to go back up and bid it. But I think we probably ought to put some language in here as far as, you know, extending contracts, so we have.
Well, I know we put it in our, usually, we have it there, but.
We're saying some, some.
You have it in yours, you said, in the cemetery.
Yeah, I think we do, I think, um, I do recall something even like in the, um, one for the, um, technology.
Yeah.
There's an op, option in the, we do with the one molly.
Yeah, we do with the one.
You know, there's a, a clause in there that allows us to extend, yeah.
Well, there is, yes, the, the current bid policy, the one we put out to bid, and this is just, um.
Yeah.
Well, this is the bid policy, the R F P is just a question, but, for proposals. But I mean, probably ought to throw some language in here just to take and clobber five or, no.
Yeah, because I know Chief Splat had it in his, and, yeah, I think we've been putting it into the R F Ps.
Yeah, we have, that's where it is.
Yeah.
But we don't have an official, like, R F P.
But it's not in the bid policy, so, yeah.
Right.
So, we ought to do that.
Yeah, so.
Be consistent.
But I mean, it's, it is, it fits in the scope of the, uh, case is not required bidding procedure, it's an item previously awarded.
Yeah.
Have we had any issues this past year with service?
Not at all, no.
Nice to continue.
How much more should we can accept Mr. Solars's offer based on the bid policy and the person, any good service we had last year?
I'll second it.
Uh, any discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
All right.
All right. Want this in that file, too?
Yeah.
So, we have oil for this year coming up. Twenty sixteen, okay, this is, I think this is what you're referring to, my friend. You wanna take the lead on it?
Well.
As I'm.
The question I have is.
You wanna keep this all together?
We received an invoice from the welfare department for six hundred dollars invoice for insurance for the food pantry. And then when I look at the, we just got the community action program invoice for twenty fifteen. We give them, this year they're asking for twenty one, I mean.
That's for twenty sixteen, that's next year's question.
Next year.
Okay, so this year, we gave a two thousand.
Yeah.
And then, with this request for the two thousand, they give us a breakdown of what they've done for the residents of Dunbar.
That's twenty fourteen numbers, twenty fifteen numbers on here.
Okay.
So, that's for next year.
Okay, I'll take the Russian difference.
I don't know.
So, the first thing they list is, uh, emergency food pantry, they provide, uh, food for, uh, people facing temporary food crisis. And they provided, uh, meals for eight people that went to the food pantry and, I believe this food pantry is in Gosstown, right?
No, I think it's Concord.
Isn't Concord?
Concord, oh yeah, that's what I meant, Concord, this one's in Concord. For four hundred rolls. And then they have supplied fuel assistance, electrical assistance, weatherization programs, and all that, but they supplied sixty thousand dollars worth of, uh, food and, uh, electric assistance and fuel assistance. So, this, and this is just for residents of Dunbar. So, they provided to Dunbar and residents, right? So, I guess the question I have is, if, if they have a food pantry, and Dunbar and has a food pantry through the church. And I believe there's a food pantry in Gosstown.
Yeah.
Yep.
Why do we need our welfare director running a food pantry on her own?
Well, I don't think she's running one on her own, the one in Gosstown, I think is a, kinda like a cooperative, I think it's multiple. Not like the one that she had here in town where it was just her.
Yeah, she used to have one in her house.
Yeah.
She picked that up and brought it to a church in Gosstown.
Yeah. Yeah.
What I'm saying is, do we need that food pantry? I, I would rather, you know, instead of spending six hundred dollars on insurance, I'd rather give the six hundred dollars.
Right.
To the church or increase our.
So, so the, um.
I think the food pantry she works with is, is controlled by the Salvation Army.
Yeah.
And it's solely donations, it's not, um, there's nobody that gets paid in that position.
I think you're right. So, we, so we fund that for six hundred dollars a year and then we donate.
Just liability insurance.
Right, for insurance, but there's no other monies being spent by the town on that one.
Last year, she asked for the remainder to be donated to the Salvation Army, so they go into, or.
Right. Yeah.
You request that the funds be allocated to the Dunbar and, um.
Right.
I don't know how it's broken down, but.
But, um, I know in previous discussions, there have been bills paid through, um, the Salvation Army that Dunbar and's picked up, right? Through the welfare director?
Yeah, we've got stuff that doesn't be picked up by anybody else.
Lots of that, man, but it's done through the welfare.
Correct.
Just through.
As opposed to this program here.
Correct.
Yeah, this year so far, we have a budget of four thousand, we've spent three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars for our welfare.
In addition to this.
To assist, to assist for.
In addition to.
Right, yeah.
Right.
That hasn't been paid yet this year.
No, no, but, yeah, okay, so we have two programs, basically.
Don't we have any to catch yet?
I'm seeing it here, it's still here. I have to find out that we're, if we charge it for a long while or not.
So, I'm just wondering, we, you know, are people double dipping too, are they getting benefits from both places?
Oh, right, but.
You know what I mean?
I'm saying, I know.
Yeah, I know, exactly.
There's a lot of stuff that's pretty.
Yeah, I know, it's all, yeah, hipper and all of this stuff. Um, but to Ted's point, why do we need two programs rather than just one?
Yeah, that sounds like a way we, especially need to.
Well, I stand for, because we did pay the, the, um, community action, it's Salvation, we're still at two thousand and.
We ought to ask Mr.
Yeah, I think we need to understand what the two things are doing here. Why the two.
I mean, because she does, I mean, because welfare back in the day, I remember, at least it cost us like twenty, thirty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, but does she coordinate with these folks too? I would, I would hope so.
I would, I would think, I mean, that's, we need to ask.
But I don't know that, yeah. I mean, I, I would think that the welfare person is, you know, kinda the big umbrella.
Right.
Looking at everything.
I mean, she does, I mean, she's done nice job of counting down the cost on that for us.
Well, no, not, not what she does.
Why, nobody's defuelling that, she's just excellent.
Yeah, I know.
But I mean, those are some questions, I just, I just don't know.
Yeah. Yeah, I think it would just be a good idea for her to come in and help us understand it there, before we say yes or no.
Because a lot of these agencies overlap each other, and they coordinate with each other and everyone's a lot, so.
Oh, I know they do. But maybe they're competing with one another, too.
We're all this to go, can you ask her to come in and?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah. Hey, give her heads up, what we want to know, so she comes in and.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, the public just got that, I'll put it over here, so I won't forget.
Alright, we got the public service company, we already went over that.
Oh, was that last week?
Yeah, we talked about that last week. Just that they, uh, they had a motion for rehearing later tonight.
Ooh.
Is this?
Is that, who does do this?
Well, you know, I'll probably, yeah. Problem in superpowers.
Right back.
Tell you information.
Just a new.
Yeah.
Was that from Health Trust?
Yeah, who's that from, right?
Health Trust, who's what?
Who's what?
There, that was.
Ah, sorry.
Alright.
File it.
That's the box.
Okay.
So, we're good there.
Okay.
Guess moving on, we have a whole pile of stuff in here now. Gonna tackle the budget first or roll offs, what else do they have in here? There's a whole bunch of stuff except for roll offs. Pick up boys and jones.
Let's do roll offs, it sounds like more fun.
Yeah. Is that for some type of, left out?
Yep.
It is.
Oh, okay, I thought I recognized it.
Yep.
You'd miss it, excuse me.
It is, it's a weapon.
And it works well.
And then you get the James Bond box there.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Yep, my mother gave me that briefcase when I graduated college.
Looks like James Bond.
My kids played with it, my grandkids played with it, and if we.
Now I've got it.
Yeah, now Tom's got it. It's been a while, when I graduated, eighty-six, in college.
It works just fine.
Almost thirty years ago. Alrighty, roll offs here, octagonal closed top roll off. Octagonal, as in.
Eight sides. No longer a square one.
They don't make them anymore?
Everybody's going to these good ones for the simple fact they're, longevity's supposed to be longer than them. And I've talked to companies that, you know, have hundreds of them out there, fifty, or whatever you want to say, have a large majority of them. Talked to vendors at a couple of shows I went to, nobody's really using the square compaction boxes. You get just that they're a smaller box, octagonals are smaller box, but you're getting just as much compaction in them, the way they're designed. And the fact that they don't have vertical upright supports, uh, doesn't allow for water and stuff to get in behind them. I mean, eventually they will rust out, but they seem to, from what I've found, you know, talked to the vendors, they actually have a longer longevity in square ones.
The color to be white, where, how they come to black?
Well, that's what I told them, the color I want is black, that we have now, so. And then, I think.
Do we pay for for black?
I don't think so.
Well, I tell you. This color is black.
The, the nicest thing about black is, it's pretty easy to match if you need to.
Yep.
I mean, black is pretty much black, it's not like.
Yeah, if you get green, you use forest green versus the.
Versus atomic green, matte green, or.
Yeah, what, what are we, wait, these are the specs that they're gonna be asking for?
Yep, I, I have a couple little changes I gotta make in it, but nothing.
But when are you gonna be sending out, though?
As soon as, I talked with Lee today, because I just finished it up, I'm all saw on the computer, and as soon as we can get the blessing to go forward, you know.
Are we doing this by ourselves, or are we going in conjunction with the other, other folks that you talked about?
I'll give him a call and see if he's ready to go, he's kinda been waiting for me, so he doesn't have to go to bid, I do, so he can just buy, and.
Does he wanna jump on our bid?
He wants to, uh, last time I talked to him, he was just waiting for me.
Because I mean, when we put, I mean, to me, this looks like a decent, you know, appendix, it goes, so we're gonna put all the rest of the big work together like.
Right, right, but that's, like, Lee, when I talked to Lee, she said that make sure I get this stuff done, and then I could come in with her, and she can plug it right in, but it's already in your computer.
Yeah, that template's pretty easy.
Yeah, it's getting easier to use it.
Yes.
Well, we're building quite a library, I think.
Yeah.
That's the whole idea, right, so that way, things consistent, and you get the same language, and you have your protections in place.
Yep. Exactly. Yep.
Then all you do is just add, you know, depending which one you need, you just add your appendix in there and go forth.
Yep. Right, that's what, you know, they told me, just give this part, and then she can stick it in the other part.
What's the difference between one and two, or you?
I just put a number on the top to try to, to separate them.
Yeah, what page you were on, yeah.
Yeah, because he said, you know, these.
Now, is number two a square one?
It says closed top roll off, the other one's open top.
That's a square box.
You got octagonal, closed top roll off, and then you got a closed top roll off.
Right, that's a recycling one, it has the doors in the top, that's the one that we put the tin, tin cans in one, wooden cans in the other.
Closed top roll off, recycling business, okay.
And then there should be one for, uh, an open top.
Open top, yeah, okay, I haven't got that one yet, so. So, the octa, uh, octagonal's a compaction.
Yes.
Maybe wanna make some type of notation for us, compaction.
How many, what's the quantity that we're bidding here, is it just one of each? No, we'd be looking at two octagonals, two compaction, and.
Well, it is a compaction, right, the octagonals are the compaction ones, right?
Yeah. Two octagonals, which are compaction, two of those. Two square ones, which are recycling.
Recycling, okay.
And three open tops.
Right, because I don't see a quantity on here, unless I'm just not.
No, there is a compaction.
That would be part of the, the pricing.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I was just wondering, yeah, I got you.
Now, the open tops are gonna be used for.
Glass demo and steel.
Okay, so you're basically, okay. What's wrong with those now?
Uh, one of them, the floor's all busted out of it, the other one. Uh, one of them, the floor is all busted out of it, the other one, the door is coming down, the side is rotted out. And then I have one that uh we're gonna keep for as long as we can, and Duncan's actually starting to show some pretty sad age in it now too, so. They just, the salt's got into them, I mean, we tried to rinse them, the salt's got into them, they've been repaired, they're just beyond repair now.
Got you.
And those ones there will be a square dumpster versus a, they actually make what they call a tub design. Which I really thought would be the way to go, but in talking to the vendors and they don't recommend them when you get into the forty yards. Cause of the stability of them, the strength of them, they're okay, thirty yard and below, they said they're, you know, it's a decent dumpster for that. I'm gonna start getting into the bigger ones there, I know a good idea. All these different dumpsters, Woody, does any of the equipment that we currently have need to be modified, like the compact or the roll off truck?
No, it'll be.
I mean, it's all just full fit function. Yeah, they're all compatible, we're. I think.
Yeah.
So you say you need to tweak these up just a little? Yeah, this is one of them, uh, as I was reading them tonight, actually, I sent them to myself as well, I looked at one. And uh, you know, sometimes you go through stuff and you forget one little thing, like on the square, on the um open tops. I just need to put the frame size for around the top, which I forgot, which I somehow forgot to do, which isn't a big deal.
On um the closed top roll off, um, this dumpster must have a, have on driver's side, front or side of size appropriate ladder.
Yep.
What if they're coming from Europe and they drive on the right side?
Yeah, that'd be an issue.
They could be importing them, I don't.
So the ladder is on the driver's side? Yes.
Just in case anybody's hanging on.
Yeah, no, I'm just thinking about, you know. It's it's, you you either get them on the, you know, they go on the side or on the front. And usually, the ones we have right now are runs.
Yep.
It just runs on the side of the dumpster.
Yep.
This allows you, if you actually have to, we have a tarp.
Yep.
We have an automatic tarp, which you don't have to get up there for. But if something happens to that and you actually have to tarp the can.
Yeah.
You need to be able to get up there to tarp it.
Sure. Yep, it's a closed top roll off, so always have to top.
The issue that can come in there is you can be, if you have an issue with the door, cause the top, on the top of those, when I put it in there. The ones that we have now, they have double doors, all the holes, there's three holes, they have double doors, and they have a latch system that comes down on the top of it.
Yeah.
I've actually had those latches coming down, the top lifts up on, if it's up on top of the truck. You're going down the road, you gotta be able to pull over, get up there and close that thing down, we secure them because those ones are getting really bad now. Before I even leave, like run bungees over the top, you shouldn't have to do that.
Right.
But I do on those ones, cause they're pretty rough.
Well, I'd rather do that than be on the highway and have to be dealing with it.
Right. You shouldn't have an issue, but if there is an issue.
Yeah.
That's why in the spec it says it must be secureable.
Yep.
And I also put in it, you know, to meet the, you know, the.
Yeah, I saw that.
In federal regulations.
Have you got multiple vendors that you deal with?
There's um, one that I actually went and looked at, their dumpsters, and I really liked their, how they designed, how they built them.
Yeah.
And then they have a company I spoke to over in Rollingsford, New Hampshire. And I just found out like a week ago that there's a company, I didn't know, I found it through a mutual friend, that they're gonna be moving to where? And if he explained it to me correctly, they're in Northwood now, they actually build dumpsters there, I didn't know that, I never even heard of them before. Um, and then I've talked to a gentleman, I can't remember where he's from, I have his card at work. And then I spoke to another company that's called Lux. Lux can be, is another town referred to where they use.
Probably want doors, cause you want multiple doors, right?
Yep.
On the um closed top, you want three doors on that thing?
There's three openings, and you either can put, if they can do one big plastic door on top, or the option of two doors to each hole.
Cause I mean, I, right now, I don't see where that says there's gonna be three openings.
I'll have to look at it, maybe I can put that in there, that I put, I know I put the opening size in it, maybe I forgot to put the three in. I'll look at them again before they go.
Yeah, cause the the, you have foot signal here, or symbol here, and then inches, so I don't know which one's right, so I'll have to go.
I'll check like inches and foot stuff, cause all it takes is put in a posture here, or you could be screwed.
Right. Top here, right. Yep.
I mean, putting the thing, you know, you know, to ask questions, you know, to get contact information like we do.
Right. Yeah, I'll I'll give it a once over again, like I said, I noticed a couple things, and I mean.
You um mentioned that they're compatible, do you wanna list your material, your current equipment so that they know?
Yeah, we can, we can list that.
Cause it, does everyone assume that you know?
Yeah, no, we can definitely put in what the make and machine is and what the.
Well, that's actually a very good idea, cause.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea, yeah.
Yeah, because that way, you know, there's no question about they have that information, so they'll know it's gonna match up to it.
Yep.
Or must meet, must match the, this piece of equipment or our equipment, and this is a list of it.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I think that's a good start.
Yeah, this is a pretty good one.
And these, these three will be, cause you said that they're bidding all in the same, in all package, will be at the end as an appendix.
One package. Right, like it'll be appendix A, then you want a fresh sheet behind it, list them all over.
Yeah. Yep, yep.
Because if whoever, if they don't wanna, you know, if they want, then we can just do it such that if they wanna go up to bid with us, I mean.
Yeah, I'll.
They could write our bid, and that way we might get better quantity, you know, I mean, if they need ten dumpsters of one type and another, you know, make it better pricing.
Yep. Like I said, last time I talked to him about it, he was waiting for me to get finished up, so. I'll call tomorrow, let it go.
Let's get this going then, if that's the case.
Yeah, this is a more that expires at the end of the year, so.
Oh, are we looking to take and put it out there for um?
Shouldn't need it more than I would, to be honest, I wouldn't take it, two weeks after that.
Four weeks. Okay, so a two week turnaround on it?
Yep, that's what I'm thinking, cause I'm I'm actually gonna be out. I'm here next week, I'm out the following week, so that's two weeks, if we can, if we can get out within, in the, within that.
Well, can we, well, I'm not driving us, can we have this ready for next week's meeting, so we can go to our blessing and then they can go out? And then while you're on vacation, your first week, and then the next week you're back, if they have questions, you can get ahold of you.
Yep.
And then we'll be, you know, open the bids and go from there. Uh, we'll also need a list of people that, you know, companies that do this kind of stuff, so we can send them that.
Yeah, I'll um, I'll put that together, I mean, I have all the stuff on my desk right now, I just, I'll throw something together, get it done with it.
Yeah, just need.
Yes, good, yeah.
And if they're gonna, and if that other, those folks wanna take and join in with us, you know, we've got any data numbers, so we can kind of, you know.
Yep.
But I think we need some, some personally, some confirmation, something solidified the fact that they will sign us, or they don't. At the last minute say, ah, no, we're gonna go with somebody else, and yeah, screw us.
Right, I will, I'll talk to them, I'll give them a call.
Yeah.
See what they can come up with or whatever.
Looks good. Thank you, Ron, it's gentlemen.
No, I think this is pretty good, a good start.
So aim for next week to try to get a finished product, so we can get this thing out and get it going, cause that'd be the. So we'll be open to that, the third to fourth week of October, so. That'd be good, so we can at least get something moving and.
Yeah.
Get a contract set up, so that way if we don't get delivering until twenty sixteen, we'll be covered for.
I talked to one of the vendors, he was talking like four, maybe six weeks turnaround.
Right, but I mean, if they're lucky ones, that's great, if not, and it's gonna be three months, we wanna have a contract in place, so we can accommodate that more than our money and not lose the opportunity.
Right, right.
Alright, gents, we ready to jump onto the uh?
Can I just bring up one other?
No.
Um.
No.
Topic of discussion.
No. What is that one sentence here?
Gee, listen.
Please.
I dislike testing, go right ahead.
Um, last week, I, board discussed the Gonyers bench. And how we're proposing to move them all over to the bandstand.
Yeah.
That's right, yeah.
Um, I had spoken to Norm, who's going to be the one coordinating, ordering, and I guess there's lack of communication with the Gonyers. Um, so um, a couple things has happened, have happened since um.
The last one?
I got in touch with um four H Wendy.
Yep.
What's her last name, Daley?
Daley, yeah.
Um, to let her know that there was potential that the selectmen are moving the bench, so that it was uniform to another benches being donated. Well, I got a very uh angry visit by Eric Cottrell the following morning. He said that um he wanted me to let the board know that he did not want the bench moved, that they had, he had met with the past selectmen. The family took great care in installing the bench, there are concrete footings in place, and they feel very strongly against changing the current location of the bench.
Now, the need can focus here and.
I asked him, and he said he did, he said he was forceful enough that I could communicate his um concerns with the board, and that he was not.
I mean, I personally understand his concerns, I think, but a pass board can't dictate what the future board can do. Yeah, um.
And it is the town's common.
Exactly.
Yeah.
He also added that um he, living in the center here, had no say in the placement of the bandstand. And he's not enamored to where the bandstand is, so he would like the selectmen to move the bandstand as well, so I think that's just a little.
Where's it, or do you like it as small too?
That was just a little.
Yeah.
Point to add that, you know, this was not in anybody's way, that it was a good place for it. And that he felt very strongly that it would really hurt the family and all their efforts of what they went through to get it moved. And then on top of that, I got a visit from the garden club the same morning, uh, cause they weren't aware that you, the board had decided to put these in their flower bed. And they have to discuss things with the garden club as to their process of how they're gonna remove flowers. You know, change the flower bed locations, or anything like that, um.
Yeah. I'm expecting to happen tomorrow, that's for sure, it's gonna take coordination.
Yep.
Yeah.
Um, you guys at Flower Garden Club, whatever, what kind of?
I am a member, I am a paying member.
Act, you're a liaison, you know.
Am I?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, we're making it, yeah.
So.
I think of Washington's our garden club liaison, for a second.
So the.
For a second, yeah.
So, so last.
Hi. There you go.
Last week I got visited by everybody, the Hodgins, the garden club, and Norm again, he did come in with the official sample.
You have to, Norm, you have to say no, you're.
Norm, um, I'm getting this one.
It's on the email, cause I don't remember it either.
Yeah, it's Norm.
I thought they changed the bench to one that didn't have a back.
Yeah.
That's, I was looking from Mrs. Gonyer, but he came in with the specs, this is what they're gonna order. They're gonna have engraved in, there's gonna be a back, and the company that makes it, they wanted it in a black. The company that makes it is going to install it, so it's installed.
So I have some concerns now that the benches aren't matching, you know, they're not similar in any way. And um, and 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 I've been, I said, I know, um, next week, Brian, at the cemetery trustees meeting. I did send out a couple of samples of um other cemeteries, uh, things, and one of the things that they do talk about are benches. And they have a spec around what a bench can be.
Yep.
And and I've been thinking about, you know, our bandstand and other things on the common out here. And maybe we need, the town needs, a um, a spec around what's acceptable dimensionally.
Yeah.
So that we keep some uniformity to, in, you know, uh, to what's going on, otherwise you're gonna have, we're gonna have.
I think once we.
It's a free.
That rosebud out there, yeah.
Once we allow a general donation like this, how do we say no to the next one?
Uh, donations after.
Well, no, you you can say okay to it, but it needs to be within, you know, some parameter, some guideline.
These sidelines. Right.
And I'm not saying you can't do it, I'm just saying that we need to try and keep things consistent, so that we don't end up with everything looking, you know, really different.
Well, I was just told that there's a bench in front of the library that has a logo of an insurance company on it.
Uh, no, it's not an insurance company, it's Globe Firefighters, they donated that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that was donated, um.
One while, I know they're on twenty-eight.
Yeah, twenty-eight, yeah, that was donated by them.
That's it.
Um, you know, I don't remember, I know the garden club had something to do with it, I think I was present at the time. And um Troy.
Put that in a minute.
Troy came, Troy Gil Troy, is that her name, Gil? What's?
Dan, was it Dan Troy's wife?
I think so, is it Gil?
Oh, wait, yeah, I don't know her name.
Yes, it is, it is.
I think she worked for them, and somehow through them, they made, they approached us at a town meeting, I believe, and offered that bench.
So right away, we have two benches that aren't uniformed, now we're gonna have a third one.
Right. Well, they're uniform in shape, maybe not uniform in terms of markings, that isn't where I was going, but I was.
Why did the gold one get put there, is there any particular reason?
Um, because I decided it would go there, no, it wasn't just me, it was the uh, the um, uh. That fire pole, the pole up there belongs to the fire department, the the flag pole, that was their thing, so um where this was coming from Globe, it kinda fit.
Flag pole. Okay. Yep.
And that's uh.
Oh, I was just wondering, I mean.
Yeah, and the the um garden club did that, I'm sure they're raising their hand and saying, mother may, I think we just did it.
Oh, I know we mentioned this before, when we talked about used to the, you know, when we had the the request for a yard sale up there and everything, we did that, we need to develop a policy for the common.
Yeah. Yep.
And I think including of benches and the spec and.
Yeah, I mean, I'm I'm not against this, I'm not changing my mind yet, but I'm just thinking we need to be uniform in what we're doing.
Yeah.
And um, I lost, that's why last week when they said there was just gonna be a bench with no back, I kinda had a sigh of relief, but now if that's changing.
Back and so.
And then after looking at what some other, what some of the cemeteries in the area are doing in terms of, you know, what's acceptable, I just thought, you know, something like that might be a good idea for us to. Yeah. So this is definitely what they wanna do, huh?
I know that there's definitely not enough seating in front of our office here, when we, you know, we're here five days a week, and we wanna go outside and stretch our legs.
Yep.
Everything's all the way over on the other side, so I don't know why everything has to be focused on that area, um.
So it's a long, awesome.
It's married to a soul, I can't, it's French, is it French?
Yeah, I don't know what you mean.
Forest.
Forest, that's it, okay. Close. No, not forest, yeah. I knew what you were saying.
Well, can we ask them the whole off on what are anything in two week?
Yep.
To turn, you know.
Yeah.
Yep.
It's not that we're saying no to it, but I mean, we need to.
Yeah.
Really rethink all this before we.
Well, yeah, and and it's not like we still have another issue with the four H folks and the garden club too.
It's a maintenance issue too, I mean, cause you know, you see, you know, if you start cutting those flowers back and it becomes grass, and you gotta mow and weed whack, and. Boy, nice what.
Right, yeah.
That's our biggest problem in cemeteries, you know, why do we try to carry them uniform and such because of mowing?
Well, I know. Yep.
And maintenance, it increases cost.
Yep.
It's taxpayer dollars.
So it's, okay, um, table, big bench for further discussion, I guess.
Yeah.
Is there anything, anyone that I can get in touch with, the, I mean, I feel like I'm spinning wheels here, and we're not moving forward, so.
In more respect, I guess.
Helpful to get the garden club in here, or?
Yeah, I would have a lot coming in, at some point, I would invite them all.
Oh, I tried, I tried, I tried, I guess the garden club said, let you guys decide on the bench and the style and where you want it, and then the garden club will get involved, cause. But right now, there's, that flat bench has changed back to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So who went from a back to not a back to back? I mean, we're making all these decisions.
Norman, and, uh, the people who are coordinating, purchasing and donating it in memory of this family. Have come up with this design, but, uh, in the email we got from, uh.
Uh, Mrs. Gonya.
Mrs. Gonya, and she, um, said that, her last email, that it, it didn't really matter where, um.
Yeah, she was good with anywhere, and it was a good flat bench.
Right.
Right, so.
But she was ready, amenable to.
Yeah, I don't think that's the problem, I think, um, it's the four H bench moving it.
No, 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 the, the thing is, at first they started with a back.
Oh, back on, yeah.
Yeah.
Then she, then she emailed.
Said it was too expensive and we were gonna go with flat, and then Norman came up.
Yeah, they were gonna do something else, yeah.
So then we said, okay, oh, that'll fit perfect where we wanted to put it.
Yeah.
And now they're coming back, and they say, yeah, they do want a back.
Yeah.
Who's making the decision?
This young man, Norman, came in with those pictures to give to me, and.
And you're explaining that we had an email from Mrs. Gonya?
Uh, I did not say that she had said she wasn't, you know, I see, I don't know, I don't even think they're talking to each other as far as. Who's gonna pick up the expense?
Maybe we need to have Norman in it, you know?
And I do CC all of them, I, I CC this, uh, Bev Chili from the Citizens Bank, Sandra Gonya, and then I include Norman on the email. But they're not, you know, he's still going out doing this thing.
Well, then, then I wouldn't, if they're not responding, and you've made an effort, let them come to you.
Yep.
You know, don't keep chasing.
Yeah.
And you can start with Norman and see where we're going with it, cause he's, he's made.
Yeah, I'm, I'll ask him if he has talked to Sandra, but he's.
Yeah, extend one more invitation from the committee of me.
Yep, and say Sandra wants to go in as well.
And then if they, they don't do it, then move on.
And again, if you'd like to extend an invitation to Wendy and, and Eric, um, you know, and they refuse. And I don't have to tell them except for the fact that, you know, make a decision in a vacuum without their input.
Okay.
I'd like to hear from them.
Yeah, it's just, this, this is taking up a lot of time, and we have a lot of other business to do.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, yep. I'm just gonna do your job at so far.
Anything else while we're at it?
So, yeah.
Um.
Yeah, see how you get the floor, then.
Well, you, I, I've been working.
She don't take no for an answer, that's good.
I've been working hard on the, the public notice that you.
Yes.
Um, were going to move forward with, or Kelsey.
Yeah, um, I'm a little confused by the dates, you like, you brought that up.
Yeah.
Cause there were a couple of emails floating around, so I kinda lost track of what the dates are exactly.
Okay, the sixth, at one o'clock is the sidewalk, which.
Yeah, that one I have.
Which the lawyer, the town attorney has said that we could walk both petitions at the same day, that's not a problem. But highly recommends we do not hear both of them at the same time, for merits.
Okay.
So as I understand it, our next, so here, Dave, since he was the first one to submit a petition, here it is on the tenth.
Which one, Dave?
Dave, no, it's, he was the first one to submit, so we'll take his up first.
So on ten, ten, it's Dave Noel?
Right, at seven o'clock here.
And that's here, right?
Yep.
And then on the twelfth during the selectmen's meeting, at seven thirty, we'll take up Michael's.
And ten, four.
Is that indeed correct?
That's correct, yeah.
And then the question, I guess, is, do we want Stephen to come here and chat with us before, cause he wants to talk to us about both petitions?
Well, does he wanna, um, does he wanna do that on the day we do the sidewalk?
He said he's.
He's open, he's holding that date right now.
That works for me, I bet it's fine, cause.
But the question, do we wanna travel to him and save us the money of him traveling down here and paying for his travel?
Well, he lives in Hawkinson, so.
I know, but we'd be.
We should get it this point.
I would think.
Well, he says that there's a, um, a shorter commute, I don't know if it's one-way commute, and he's right in Hawkinson, so there's no going back to Laconia or whatever it is.
Right, yeah, I know, he'd come here, and he'd, leave from Laconia, come here, and then he'd just go home.
Right.
So basically, we're paying him to take him, drive most of the way home.
To drive home.
So if we went up there, it'd just be the time, you know, if we spent a half hour, it's obvious, we get to go the half hour.
That's perfect.
Yeah.
If he drives down here and spends a half hour, we're getting, for, you know, we're getting an hour to an hour and a half of charge.
Yeah, we always have a half hour.
Right.
I don't mind going up there, Brian.
I don't either, I mean.
Okay, so, you have a.
Plus we'll go a half, you know?
You have a sidewalk at one o'clock.
Yeah.
How long does that take?
It shouldn't take more than an hour, should it?
I would hope that.
Isn't it just to go down and walk the road, basically, or what?
Well, we already know where Dave's, I mean, we haven't seen anything from Dave yet.
We haven't seen anything from Dave yet, right?
No, he said he was gonna get, I just picked up the phone and talked to him verbally.
Yeah, cause he has till the eighth, and that was the letter I gave him.
Okay. Yeah, October eighth, and I asked him to get it in sooner, because that just doesn't give me a lot of time.
Right.
So you're going, you guys are going to the attorney's office.
Oh, what time, October eighth, we're not going till November sixth.
I don't know yet, we're working it out.
But you.
Those dates were all November and October, talked, you know, the sixth, the tenth, and the twelfth.
And November dates.
Yeah, you said ten, ten, it's actually eleven, ten.
Oh, it's eleven, six?
Eleven, six, right.
The sidewalk.
The sidewalk, right?
And then ten, eleven, ten, and.
Eleven, ten, eleven, twelve, right, cause.
Eleven, twelve, gotcha.
It's veteran days, it's, Veterans Day is, um, a holiday, and it's right in between, that's why.
It's interesting, what we have in my calendar, okay.
Because otherwise, you wouldn't have the thirty days.
Oh, yeah, interesting, yeah, you know what, I have it in here for.
Originally, we, we said ten, ten.
Yeah, I have it in here for the eleven, so I, my bad.
So, I mean, he's supposed to have his information to us on October eighth, so, which gives us just about twenty-eight days, twenty-nine days.
Yeah, okay.
So that should be plenty, I would think.
All right, so Brian, do we?
Do you want to hold off on sending the notices until he gets this in here?
No, 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 no.
No, okay.
No, we can move forward.
No, no, if it fires, and he's.
He's, he's got a deadline to work to.
Right, he has a deadline, but you said it wouldn't give us much time, I thought you might have, I think it was.
I always thought, I, I had to hold my certified mail, because they're ready to go.
Oh, no, no, so.
No, I don't think you have to.
Okay.
Um.
That way they get plenty of time to.
So Brian, do we wanna go see him on that Friday afternoon?
I'd say, one, one, wow.
Cause I'm thinking, it shouldn't take us more than an hour, right?
Plus a half hour of view.
If we start, if we start.
Oh, but I mean, when we're out there, we're just going out there to, to see it.
We're just gonna walk that short distance to the gas station line and back, and then we're, again, we're gonna probably stand right in the middle of Kelsey, in front of like, uh, his house and say, okay, yeah.
Yeah, and we're gonna have the two maps and say, okay, this is, yeah, okay, yeah, all right.
And then, that'd be it, so I mean, I would think a half hour, I mean, forty-five minutes max.
Okay.
If one of us falls down or something.
Could happen, but I don't know.
And then you're going to the attorney's office?
Yeah, so we'll go to the attorney's office, at what time do you wanna plan to be there?
I would say no later than two thirty, but between two and two thirty, we should be there.
Oh, let's see, let's do two thirty then.
One, two thirty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think she just.
And he's in Laconia, you said?
Yeah, I don't remember either, so I'll get that.
We get enough mail from, like, bills.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
Plus it'd be a road trip.
Yeah.
In Paracol.
Well, it's a nice day, we can take the bike.
I will. You get your helmet, right?
I have, yeah. No problem. We'll put ten to the side, Ty, he won't come to the meeting, but he'll just come to hang out if there was.
So, so we're good on that, right?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
You gonna let Stephen know?
I'll let Stephen know, and I'll, you know, I'll, Dave, he's gotta get his information, if I could.
Maybe some of it's a, you know, detailed description and a picture, it's worth a thousand words, we should be able to move forward. You gotta help us. So. Asked, anything else? The wells going dry? Budgets. It's nine o'clock, let's see if we can get out of here before nine thirty.
See if we can get out of here before eleven thirty.
What I did provide to you today is a quarterly, you have the quarterly revenue, and you have the quarterly expenses.
All right, um, expenses, that's what, conferences, that's revenues.
We do back-to-back expenses.
Oh, then we got details, they own accounts, expenditure.
Those are, those are all warrants, that's me.
Ah, okay, good.
Those are all warrants that Ted asked me to pull up.
Oh, so each one's a warrant?
Correct.